All right, we will call our town of Windermere July 13, 2021 council meeting to 6:00 PM. Would you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
And our brief invitation tonight, Father as always, we pray for your guidance and his counsel and his town and staff and all our residents as we make decisions that impact everyone here in our community. We hope that we make those decisions with good mind conscience and good guidance. We also pray that you always draw on our first responders to protect us as well as all those who remain who protect us day and night. Amen. And tonight's open forum public comment, we have several people on the list tonight. And I'll go ahead and I'll name those off. You'll have the option to go ahead and speak now for your three minutes or if you would like, you can wait till the agenda item that you came to speak on, so just let me know when you go by those. Mr. Jerry Fay. Are you going to defer Jerry or do you want to speak now, sir? You'll defer? Okay, great. And Ms. Suzie Carr. She'll come join us at the podium. Of course, you know this well, but go ahead and give us your name, address.
637 Ridgewood Drive, Windermere. It is good to see all of you. I haven't seen many in a long time. But I'm here because we need to get the pump, bump, redo from in front of my driveway. And I apologize, my neighbors couldn't be here tonight because they have all the photographs of the damage, the waters and mud have done to their own property. Plus, they go into it down, mud and such. And Bill Burton is not here tonight either, but he's happy to have it moved in front of his house. And the people next door will provide you with photographs when we get back to town. Do you have any questions?
None here. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. George Polker, I believe you're going to defer, sir?
Defer, yes.
All right. Ms. Judy Black. And Ms. Judy Black will defer. Mr. Kirk Fraser. Defer. Mr. Edgar. Defer, all right. Mr. McKinley. He's going to take his opportunity right now. Come on up to the microphone, sir, give us your name and address.
I'm McKinley, 536 Magnolia Street, Windermere. And for people that like to put it out specifically, it's the golden yellow house located on the northwest corner of 6th and Magnolia.
And you'll tell us how many years you've been there.
Eleven years. Just a couple of things. All of you have a tough job and I think everyone out here understands that. And you're going to be making some decisions tonight. The only request that I will make dealing with the boathouses. And the reason why I'm speaking now is looking at the agenda. I'm not going to be here tonight. So I'm going to make sure. But anyway, no one boathouses. That can is not made you can get down the road immediately. If you want to do whatever for leases or whatever, that the ownership of those boathouses needs to be determined once and for all. Finally, not 20 years ago, 50 years ago, or if not, there's going to be a future council sitting here 10, 15, 20, 30 years from now, trying to hammer out that same thing. I've never been one that believes in taking things down the road. Get determination and stay with it. Second of all, I, it was my pleasure to be the council liaison to the Parks and Recreation for six years. That is one hardworking group of people. And I understand that there were some disparaging remarks made about some of them. And I, as a resident of this town, take exception to it. They work hard providing parts for all the residents of this town. Unfortunately, these parks are also public. So when something happens, you can't blame the Parks and Recreation. They work hard. They put in a lot of hard hours doing what they do to improve the parks and improve the community. So I take exception. When someone comes up, makes remarks against one or any of them because they're good people and work hard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just for clarification, none of those comments came from up here. So we know how hard all of our volunteers work and certainly I know that many people reached out to us folks who were maybe spoken unkindly of and maybe a little out of turn and certainly unfair. And it's my hope that we don't see that in the future. I think that we're better than that. I know we can be better than that and do better than that. So that is my wish out there and I know we all share that. All right, seeing no other fellow speakers at this point in time not defer, we'll go to special presentations and proclamations. I believe we have Officer swearing in. This is Officer DeCarlo swearing in, sir. Chief Ogden, you're for second.
We do well. Good evening, Mayor. How's
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. Town residents and Windermere Police Department officers. So I have the same pleasure today of doing the ceremony, swearing in of our newest officer. So please join me in welcoming our newest officer Cameron DeCarlo right here. With four years' experience as deputy sheriff at the Cypress County Sheriff's Office and was really past real chief of law area. He received outstanding praise from supervisors and were glad to have him aboard. Officer DeCarlo also served in the U.S. Coast Guard from March of 2011, which improved 2017, where he conducted search and rescue missions and maritime law enforcement. Officer DeCarlo was also part of the team involved in anti-piracy and anti-drug operations in Virgin Gulf. Officer DeCarlo recently just completed his field training program and had what we call an accelerated, accelerated training. So technically at this time period, he wouldn't even be done with his FTO, but because he's done such a great job, he's completed his FTO. He actually worked today and yesterday. So you see him out there in the streets. So we ask that any of our residents, when you see him, wave at him, stop him, give him a chance to go in a little bit. And he has been a great and wonderful addition to the Windermere Police Department. So with that being said, Cameron, raise your right hand. What do you have to me? I state the name. solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect, and defend Constitution and United States of America, the State of Florida, the ordinance of the town of Windermere. That I am duly sworn and qualified to serve in the position as police officer. That I will well and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, perform the duties of police officer of the town of Windermere, which I'm about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations. Town manager, take a photo with him and parents or family members, girlfriends. Only one girlfriend at a time. Very awesome. Yes, we're doing a fabulous job out there already. Receiving a lot of great praises on him. Next up, we have a special award we get to present to the chief's award. So if I can have Marcellina. We have a special award that I call the chief's award. When we come into contact with a resident who does something that is just truly outstanding and truly awesome too, working collaboratively with our agency and with the town. It's called the special chief's award. I'm going to read that first. Thank you for your service here. On May 12, 2021, you observed an elderly male who appeared to be deteriorated walk into your coffee shop, for those who don't know, it's right across the street. Recognizing that he may need some assistance, we were able to ascertain his telephone number from him. And you learned that he reported missing from the last encounter, which was actually a notice out to the neighborhood. You contacted the police dispatch center and relayed this information. Because of your actions, the family and friends are comforted knowing that your love was a good hand to return home safely. Your quick actions to contact emergency services ensured that this man would never left alone. And your willingness to renovate and help a hand is to be committed and is certainly grateful by the Windermere Police Department. On this day, I'm going to present to you the Windermere Police Department's chief's special award from me to you. And thank you for your service and willingness to get involved.
You forgot an award. So that's a good thing. For the council members, thank you so much for everything you do and the police chief and all the police department of Windermere. To me, they're like angels in blue. Sometimes they're like the blue angels, but they're definitely, I rest my two businesses, my home. I am, I'm at peace because I know they're, they are around. So for that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I did want to say something that the first contact, I just want to mention her name. Her name is Yvonne. Oh gosh, I forgot her last name. But she was the one that did the first contact with the person. So she alerted me and she called the police department. And so that's how it came about. But I'm so glad that she did because when he walked into the coffee shop, I all, like all, all attention was on him. And so thanks to her alerting me, then we were able to stay with the gentleman. But I just wanted to say one thing is that, well, I was driving with my wife from Mandora one day and she heard something on the radio. And she said, oh, that's nice. And I'm like, why can't it be so nice? I'm here with you. I'm listening to the radio as well as you are. And she goes, the lady, the person on the radio said, love God and love people. And that is what it's all about. So love God, love people. Fall short on both counts, but love God, love people.
Ms. Yvonne's going to be here next. You can make it tonight. I'm totally getting hard-wired as well.
Thank you.
Oh, the mayor's coming up. I'm coming, I'm sorry. So and just for the record, it's Mermo and Pizza 14. We got to get a roadblock. Take care of our downtown.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And our last recognition is Officer Kevin Griffin. Not a baker. Come on up here. So today we're going to recognize him for his five years of dedication and service to the town of Windermere and the Windermere Police Department. It's hard to believe you've done here five years already. Yeah, I think when you came on, you were like 16. Now just a couple years older than that. So we're going to recognize him today and give him his five year service award. But I did want to say a couple of words. Griffin has been an outstanding officer for us. He has been, if anybody, he works primarily midnight shift. Some people may say, I don't see him a whole bunch because he likes the midnight shift. He keeps our town, protects our town safe. I think the council folks here will probably attest to, you know, they get a little privileged information about what goes on to the town each and every single night. So maybe they are shocked at how active he is and how active it is here. But that actually keeps each and every one of you safe at night. And I think you really would be surprised what was on. I know that he has been the highest producing officer in the Windermere Police Department. He received the officer of the year last year for that. And he had 26 or 27 DUI arrests? 27 DUI arrests last year. So somebody in the town of Windermere thinking, wait, we only have two miles. Stretch the rope. How does that happen by just one officer? But that really is, and that allows you to switch site at night. So Griffin, I appreciate your service and recognition of five years of dedicated and honorable service of citizens to the town of Windermere and Central Florida community and Windermere Police Department, given us 13 days a day, July 2021, Windermere. Congratulations. Family members here, all the dads here, girlfriends here. Girlfriend downstate.
Way to put the pressure on him.
He's used to it.
You can't just try.
And that is it. There's a lady there.
So we officially call Griffin the hound dog up here. So he earns it and everything. Thank you, sir. Next is our consent agenda items. You can, of course, approve all of these because one item where you may ask to approve individual items. Our consent agenda tonight is 4A and 4D. These are security cameras for Ferwood Park, Fourth Avenue and Ray Street. This is a retroactive. Did you want to make any comment, Robert?
Yeah, just based on the amount of complaints and the amount of police activity, we've had not one, but at least two at the parks. We want to make sure that we have eyes and ears on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week basis. So we went out to bid for three different companies. We were able to procure a company that Tony is familiar with. They were able to expedite the installation as much as they could in a construction age to get those security cameras ready to go. I went ahead and authorized the purchase of all three of these cameras, again, based on complaints, based on safety measures. So I thought it would be prudent for me to go ahead and authorize that, per the charter, and then bring it back to you after the spending of more than 10,000 for each individual project was less than 10,000 for those three cameras. But I know that there's some that are on the Zoom call and there's some that are in the audience as well that are directly impacted by the actions that are happening in all of these parks. But again, it's another step in the right direction for not only enforcement, but hopefully deterrence of the activity that's occurring at those locations. And Tony didn't clearly run with an update as far as the timing of when their action would be operational. But chief, these sergeants, patrolmen were able to be equal to directly contacting to these cameras and see what's going on. They don't have to be at the park, they can see it. And also have tag readers as well. So if somebody's acting up, they get into a car and we can follow through for a while within investigation.
All right, thank you, sir. Council willing for a motion to approve items 4A. I'd like to combine a call brief and make a motion for a second. Any further comments, council, questions? Seeing none, we begin voting with the stated.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye. Given that, 4A and 4B, we'll move to our minutes. Our town council meeting minutes for May 25th, our workshop, the workshop meeting through May 26th. And our town council meetings from June 8th. Council, you can begin with all of these items as one item or will the council be going on there? For a motion to approve? Mayor? Yes, sir. Okay, which, on which item? Actually, two.
If we can move closer to the mic or might be move closer to this.
Item 11, former mayor Gene Spears' name is misspelled. Under mayor and council liaison. Is that from item 16? The, no, he's from June 8th, correct? That's from June 8th, yes, correct.
I have correct, Gene, G E N.
Okay, mine says he with an H, H and E. This is correct? Okay, great. Never mind.
We do have some formatting issues and we'll sort over and grant this. I'll say a word on that.
Thank you, councilperson Martin. All right, ladies and gentlemen, make a motion. A great point, Mr. Martin. Motion to approve by councilperson Martin, you give it up for a second.
Second.
Second. Any further comments or questions, council? Seeing none, we begin voting with councilperson Martin. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Here unanimously. Next up is item 7. These are appointments for committees and boards. This is the way committee. We have four individuals who would like to be appointed to the race committee. It's Macy Mitchell, Madeline Rumble, Ethan Kraus, and Maria Benar. Do we have a motion to approve those, sir?
I make a motion.
Motion by the stated for a second? Second, councilperson Martin. Any questions? Seeing none, we begin voting with councilperson Williams.
Aye.
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 Thank you, council. Here unanimously. Next up is item number eight. These are contracts and agreements. This is item 8A. This is a boathouse lease extension. We have several individuals who would like to have their public speaking opportunity here. And we will begin with those who deferred. And we'll start with Mr. Jerry Fay, 28, Jerry?
Mayor, did you want me to do a roadmap first of the procedure you want to do?
Yeah, that's fine. Do you mind, Jerry? Give us one second.
I don't.
We'll go ahead and have Robert kind of lay it out a little bit. Thank you for cooking pancakes with me.
I guess we could sauce.
Hey, sauce.
Yeah, just basically, you know, the lease agreement you have in front of you tonight is within the agenda packet was one which that was drafted out for the nation week, the town council meeting. What staff is looking for direction tonight is whether to proceed with that lease agreement as written or as amended for whatever town council requests. But in principle, we need to know if we want to move forward with this lease agreement and/or another option. And I know that the legal representation for at least some of the boathouse owners is present and wish to speak as well. So I'm not sure if, you know, Jerry's retained his attorney as well, or if this is just a separate little council that others have retained.
No, we didn't retain our own.
Okay. So I know that the attorney for at least one of the boathouse tenants is here and would like to speak as well. So depends on which where you want to go, but Jerry's already had the mic. But after we hear from public and the attorney, Heather and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
That sounds good. So I think we'll go ahead and do, we'll go ahead and hear from those who signed up. So let's go ahead and do that. Then we will go to the attorneys for those individuals who have that attorney for their boathouse representation. And we'll move to Robert and Heather for any questions, comments. Sound good? Jerry?
Jerry Fay, 28, 9th Street. We've owned one of the boathouses since the mid 60s. In looking at this lease agreement, we've talked about that. There's a few things that stuck out that really kind of got my craw. One of them is under 80, excuse me, one EC where it says that the town owns the boathouses. The best of by now is that's never been confirmed. In fact, the lease that we signed 20 years ago certainly says that the boathouses are owned by the individuals. So that's one what I see as a flaw. Next, moving on to Article 5B. It says that you're not allowed to refuel your boat or bulk storage. I'm not sure what a good head of a boat is if you can't refuel it. And there's no definition as to what bulk storage would be ever talking, 5 gallons or 55 gallons. Moving on to 16A. They say that anytime either at the termination of the lease or during the lease, they, at their discretion, they can come in and take the boathouses away. And then it is our responsibility as a still boathouse owner to take care of paying for the removal and the restoration of the boathouse area. 21B is, in my opinion, totally unfair. The town accepts absolutely, even though they claim they own them, they, they accept absolutely no responsibility or liability for those boathouses whatsoever. And the last one is the root duty, in my opinion, is 4A. And it says that up until 90 days following the signing of the leases, after we sign the leases, they have 90 days to come to us and tell us what our expenses per month will be. You might as well open your wallet and a vacuum, in my opinion. That's totally unfair. And closing, let me put this to the council members. If someone, think to yourself, if someone wrote this lease to you, would you sign it? I think we all know the answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Ms. Suzie Carr has spoken. George Polker, you going to speak, sir?
Yeah, I know I am. I'm just checking. And if I go over, I'm going to steal Judy's minutes because I might go a few minutes over.
I need to get permission from Judy. Can we do?
He has permission to take mine.
George Polker, 405 West 3rd Avenue. So the central issue is, I understand, about the boathouses. And what I think I heard you guys say, I'll say at our workshop, is fairness. How do we make the boathouses fairly available to all? As far as I know, right now, there are two solutions proposed. Someone to take the boathouses out of private ownership and in some way distribute them to other residents, probably charging a rent in that process. Government taking private property to distribute it to others in order to make it more fair and to collect the rent. This is a very definition of socialism. And perhaps it borders on something worse. I'm not trying to be alarmist, but it does concern me. I spent 28 years of my life defending this great nation. We went to war, both hot and cold wars, to fight nations that did this to their citizens. Socialist solution really concerns me. The other proposed solution is continuing private ownership. This allows capitalism to work, which it has quite successfully. We have several homeowners here. They're going to speak, so you'll meet them as they speak. I was going to have them all stand up, but there's no need for that now. They are, though, but a fairly, a part of a fairly long line of ownership. And who are these other guys that own these boathouses in the past? Well, we start with the founder of the town, Cal Palmer. Cal Palmer probably built all those boathouses around 1915. And he gave, he said he gave the property that is now Palmer Park to the town, but he kept the boathouse. And he used it till he died in 1965 and passed it to his heirs. Doesn't sound like he ever considered those boathouses to be on that park property. And he certainly did not think that the town owned them. Who else has been an owner of these things? Mayors, Ruineck, town councilman Fred Pryor, by the way, he's the guy that gave us the roundabouts. He's a hero. Town manager Vic Thompson and a host of other solid, upstanding citizens. Each one of them bought, paid for, and eventually sold a boathouse, never thinking that they belonged to the town. Each one of them bought, paid for, and eventually sold a boathouse, never thinking that they belonged to the town. Heck, the town never thought they belonged to the town. Never once in a hundred years has the town ever tried to insert itself into a transaction. I just keep wondering, why now? You know, there have been about 40 owners of the boathouses throughout the history. If you do the math, that equates to a boathouse changing hands every two and a half years. That's really not unfair. That's capitalism at its finest. So ownership seems to be the key to this equitable distribution. The funny thing is, though, that neither one of us can prove that we own what we think we own. The town, I asked the town for documentation that they own that strip of land that's right in front of the boathouses. And they can't provide it. Now, of course, we on the other hand claim ownership, but all we can produce are quick claim deeds. And quick claim deeds, as we know, are not real deeds. They're only conveyed something that was warranted in the past. So in a sense, they've, they've acted as bill of sales for, for the years that we have them. Um, so that ownership thing has to be settled in court. But that ain't going to happen, I don't think. So we have to do something else about this. One thing I think we can agree on, though, is that, uh, throughout the years, these owners have been commendable stewards of these boathouses. They've been staunch preservationists of these iconic Windermere treasures. The proof is that they're still standing. Um, speaking of fair, I don't think that we boathouse owners have been treated very fairly throughout all of this process. But my thought is, there's a solution out there, and I would like to find it. I don't know what that is yet, but the path to it is a cooperative effort. The thing that has been missing from all these discussions is two-way conversation. The dictatorial, unfriendly, and non-negotiated nature of the one-sided lease that you have before you is the result. I have a proposition. I propose that an individual from the council and an individual from the owners group be appointed by their respective groups. And these two individuals would then work together, in the absence of lawyers, but in the presence of truth, to seek solutions to the issue of fairness. And this way, both sides will be party to a, an agreement, and the recommended solution will then be debated in public by the council. Um, that maybe could happen quickly, but there's, there's really no reason to feel restricted by time. Uh, there's no reason to rush into a bad agreement. You could, if you wanted to this evening, extend the current leases. And, um, I'm almost done. And then we can maybe proceed with that. I'd also propose that we jointly, not jointly, hire an independent attorney to draw up the agreement when the solution's been found. It seems that the town manager and the attorneys for both sides are a little too close to the issue to be completely impartial. Two negotiators would select that attorney. In closing, I would quote the immortal words of Rodney King. Yes, that Rodney King. Why can't we all just get along? I'm George. Yep. Next up is Mr. Jimmy Black.
Oh, I can't mind the word.
Did you give it, oh, you don't want to say anything else? All right. Mr. Kirk Fraser.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name's Kirk Fraser, 415 West 3rd Avenue. Um, you know, I've been, uh, everybody doesn't know me, I'm kind of new here. I've been here a few years right now, but, um, I've been a player and a coach in the National Hockey League for 42 years and first moved to Orlando in 1995 when I became the coach of the Soul of there. So I didn't, wasn't familiar with Florida at all, didn't know Orlando. But shortly after moving here, we discovered Windermere. And we purchased our home at 426 Forest Street. Um, my three boys and myself and wife walk by Palmer Park almost daily and always loved the park and the boathouses. As we moved several more times in the hockey business, we sold our home on Forest Street and waited 16 years for the Luff's house to become available and the opportunity to move back to Windermere. We love the big porch that looks out over the park, the lake, and the boathouses. Our boathouse was built by Palmer Luff's grandfather, town co-founder Cal Palmer, over a hundred years ago and always been part of their family. When we purchased the home, the boathouse was part of the property. I'm unsure of the council's plans for the boathouses, but I've invested a lot of time and money into my boathouse, and I would like to keep it especially since it's directly across the street from my property and has been part of the property since it was built. I spent several thousand dollars and many hours restoring our boathouse number one while keeping it true to the original charm. It would be a huge mistake to tear down these boathouses and part, and a part of Windermere's history. It would only be inviting problems as this would be the new access point to the Lake of Bird Island, which would become a nightmare. Traffic from non-residents would be lined up to park at Palmer Park, which would be also endangering the kids and families playing in the park. Our police department would have to spend all their time managing unruly intoxicated youth instead of looking after our residents and town needs. We are current caretakers of this piece of Windermere history, and we would like to continue to maintain and look after these boathouses for everyone. I hope the town council reconsidered the lease that was offered to, offered to us, sit down and work out an agreement that would be fair and really good for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. And, um, I also wanted to comment, your house is coming along very nicely. Looks fantastic.
Thank you.
You've done a lot of work on it. As, as our next speaker, uh, on his new home, uh, across the way as well. Uh, next up is Mr. Doug Kegler.
Hello, my name is Doug Kegler. I'm building the house on 316 Palm, so Palm Street, 3D. So we're very close to the boathouses. And as currently mentioned, you know, when we first saw the lots there for sale, um, you have the park and the boathouses was a nice charm. Now, yes, our city, our house we're building is very modern. Uh, this is really going on boathouses, but we love the boathouse, boathouses there and the park, um, the next neighborhood. Um, so I'm for the boathouses remaining. And I just have a few points to point out that the town, you know, as told me in states that they own the boathouses. Um, I, I would like to see something that, um, we know they were built by private, and paid for by private citizens over a hundred years ago. And those citizens have been paying for the upkeep and maintenance over the hundred years. Um, so I'd like to see something that the town owns them. Um, I also can't imagine how much money has been spent on legal fees on this matter um, over the past 40 years, debating back and forth who owns them. Um, I know we have north pressing issues, um, like the 24,000 for the security cameras for these three parks we have. Um, I also heard that whole lease concept came about some 40 years ago because people thought the boathouses were ugly. Um, and they were in bad shape back then, uh, I was told. But now they bring up, up to date, and they look as good a shape as the new schoolhouse you have in town. So as I ride on around the lake on my boat, I see some boadocks and houses that also are in bad shape. But the town's not trying to take those over, um, because they can't. Um, there's no gray area to take those over. So I ask just, you know, if the boathouse owners had a warranty deed instead of a quick claim deed, would we be here today? I don't think so. Um, inclusion, you know, the town council, mayor, town manager, you're supposed to be working with the citizens like a partnership. But somewhere along the line, beginning the town versus boathouses. Sort of like two neighbors feuding, uh, for generations, creating why they would start to feud. So I think it's time for the town to right this wrong, put the mask behind this, get rid of the lease, and officially state the current boathouse owners own the boathouses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right. So from here, thank you all for your comments. Um, and we, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have your name right in front of me.
I'm sorry, may I take?
Yes. This is the attorney for, George, is this your attorney or?
Well, Russ is the attorney. Officially, we all pooled money together to hire her. So she's working for...
The consortium, all of us. So, hey, thank you. And I apologize for having you introduce yourself.
No, don't worry, I'm Alice in Trumbull with Windermere to walk from 329 Park Avenue in Winter Park. Um, and, you know, I think that the boathouse owners gave a pretty good summary of how they feel about this. Um, I've had some discussions with Heather. I know we traded some emails on this. We've kind of gone through the lease. And what we felt like made the most sense tonight, um, is certainly, I think the framework in the lease is consistent with what was discussed at the workshop. Um, but there are some open issues that Gina and George pointed out. There's some questions in here and some things that I think we'd want to clarify and, you know, um, maybe just tighten up a little bit. So what we would like to do tonight is have your authorization to move forward in tailoring that lease a little bit more. Um, we feel like it's something that we can do and have ready to go by the next council meeting. Um, you know, certainly, I think we've made a lot of progress already. So I think we would just ask you to continue the discussion. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Council, any questions for boathouse owners' representation at this time? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Or do you want to go or do you want to, uh, have Heather go for a little bit here?
I can go. Um, first and first, you know, again, there's a lot of discussion relative to demolition of the boathouses. At no time has this town council consented to any demolition of those boathouses. Um, I think the discussions and options consented were to either save or restore those boathouses, whether the option one or option two. Um, and when people talk about, again, the, um, history and proof of ownership, I think you need to go back to the 86 lease, which states again that after the lease is terminated, that they relinquish their rights to the town as far as ownership. The O1 agreements, um, which again, it's a contract between two parties, that again, after, in some section 12 states, that they would relinquish, relinquish all ownership rights to the town of Windermere. Um, at the 25th meeting, the town council consented to extend those leases for 20 years with, again, a hard reset. Let's say they agreed to be by 20, 25 years, thinking that was consent. What to do, again, a hard reset, um, but at no time was there discussions to demo those structures. In Windermere itself, yes, it does say demolition, but that's just in the cases they, um, Heather brought this up earlier. Um, saying when I was talking to her, like if a lightning bolt strikes one of the boathouse, um, one intended, you know, is, um, leasing that boathouse and refuses to rebuild it, the town would go in, demo, and, and refurbish that. That's why it's under section 16, which is refurbishment of the boathouse and not demolition. We can actually take that out. So there's no question that the town council are always intent to have those boathouses there and existing. Um, again, the options that are in front of you tonight are, so number one, move forward with the, um, lease that's in front of you with a couple of amendments, as their little council has stated. You know, we're friendly to some of those amendments. As Jerry said, they want to know how much it's going to be in parts of them signing that. That's fair. Um, you know, and there's some other clarifications that we can make so future councils are having to readdress the stated issue 20 years from now or 25 years from now. But again, as if you're wanting to go with that extension and or go into a different direction, you see that, um, direction from council. And I'll let Heather answer any questions relative to not only, um, some of the issues that are brought by the residents, but also the lease itself.
Appreciate that, Robert. Um, and I, I too want to second the, you know, some of these things that are, that are being spoken. I want to clarify that there, you know, there is no desire to tear the boathouses down. There has been some of that discussion in the past, if you read through the minutes at different times by different people, but, um, I've not heard that at all from this council as we have moved forward. Um, I think we've been pretty consistent there. So I just want to make sure that everyone does understand that. I, I also get my end of a little bit of the socials comment, but fortunately I'll talk about that over a beer or some other time, so. All right, council. Um, council, do you have any further questions or comments on this matter? Rick, sorry. Oh, Heather, were you going to go? I'm sorry.
I know we had a slow public comment from Mr. Gentry that used to be right on the record.
Oh, I apologize to you there. That's what you were trying to get me for. All right. Please put that in for Mr. Gentry.
It is an email from Russell Gentry. Today, July 13th at 4:59 PM. Good evening, council, Russell Gentry, or Oniwa Second Avenue. I am writing to you since I am unable to attend due, in person, due to work travel. It will come as no surprise to council that I am very passionate about boathouses and our ownership. This is a very confusing and difficult challenge. However, I would ask council to look at a much bigger picture. That bigger, bigger picture is that there is way more support of residents to leave the ownership of the boathouses as they are today and are controlled as private owners. That thin line that has existed for over a hundred years has helped to keep the area near Third and the Pine from becoming yet another problem area for the town. A recent petition was completed with over a hundred residents that supported the current owners versus the town forcing a change that would make the boathouses town property. Thank you for all of your attention you have given this and please work with current representatives to resolve this matter.
Thank you, Robert. I appreciate that. Um, for having Mr. Gentry's comments read into the minutes. Um, Heather, did you want to go ahead and make some comment now? I wasn't sure if we were going to do a little Q and A here in a while here, so I was going to kind of give a deal. But why don't you go ahead?
I can answer any questions that you have. And I think it's important for me to point out, though, that you set the policy and I get you, I, I do my best, and our firm does the best to get you to that point. So I'm not close to the situation, like with any of the facts or any concerns about where you're going to go. I want to get you to that place the proper way. Um, I can answer questions about the lease that we've drafted, and, um, I can go over any of the points that were raised by the lessees. And I think right now, too, one of the important things is, in the 2002 lease, it does say in section 12, that's the negotiated lease that's in place right now with the boathouse tenants. It says in that section that they are surrendering the ownership and possession at the end of that lease. And they're surrendering the ownership and possession of the premises. And the premises is defined earlier on to be the area where they are enclosing their boats. So I think that that is, we have nothing else. But we need, I need direction from the council where you want to go at this point.
Thank you very much. And that is very clearly written in there, uh, and that is definitely, um, and that was the intent when that was written. If you go back and read everything, like several people in the room have, um, that was intentional. And it was, uh, to be, uh, to avoid just this, uh, situation that we're finding ourselves in now, which if you read the minutes of Windermere, it's like going back in time every 20 years. You could just change the dates out and you would never know. And then play a little match game because, you know, we have our challenges with the lakes and, and our challenges with folks who are trying to, you know, maybe use those and aren't using those in the nicest ways. Um, these things come up, you know, about every 20 years, so it's very interesting. Council, so basically now we find ourselves here with, uh, this draft lease in front of us. So, um, our discussion tonight will be whether there's interest in the council in moving forward with this particular lease or amending this lease to move forward, or whether council is interested in going a different direction with the, with some different options in terms of a, a reset. All of those things again have been talked about in the past. Uh, but I do want to clarify again that there's new discussion about removing or tearing down existing boathouses. Council, I leave, uh, I leave this to your discussion. And also take advantage of all the people we have here to get your opinion, your questions answered if you haven't already. Yes, sir. Mr. Gatt, you first. Maybe like age before we do either. Some kind of...
So, um, a couple of points. Um, first of all, Mr. Polker, I take exception to the socialist comment as well. Um, hopefully you and I can have a couple of beers and discuss that as well because that's, uh, you know, I, I believe, uh, wholeheartedly in private property ownership. But I also believe there's a, a time and a place where federal, um, state municipal governments lease back property that they own to private citizens to do private, um, functions on. Which is where I land on, on this situation, quite honestly. Um, I, I don't believe that we have, um, established ownership by the private citizens, um, I, I don't believe that we have established ownership by the private citizens throughout the time with the quick claim deeds. Therefore, I, I believe that the, the town of Wintermore owns the property that the boathouses reside on. Whether that's, that includes the boathouses themselves or not, that's a topic for discussion. But according to the, the lease terms, you, you relinquish that ownership at the, at the termination of that lease. During the workshop, I was wholeheartedly in favor of a hard reset. You know, 20 years ago, folks that looked like us were sitting up here probably debating the same thing. And, you know, that hard reset, as stated, as relinquishing the ownership of the boathouses has put us exactly where we sit today. It didn't solve anything. What I think we need to do is solve this going forward, whether that's a lottery system to redesignate the ownership or the lessee of the, of the boathouse. I think that needs to be considered. There's, you know, you have, you have your interests, the town has their interests, and the folks sitting up here on the panel tonight are trying to determine what is in the best interest of the entire town. So I appreciate the, the time, Mayor. Turn it back over to Councilman Williams.
Thank you for this thought, sir. Very well thought out. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir. Reviewing the lease, you know, I definitely think there's a lot of little things that need to be tweaked. You know, the feelings that he's wanting to point out, section 16, you know, reads to me that we're intending on tearing it down and that's not the case. If we move forward with the lease, my thought in, because I look out and I see neighbors and friends and, and new people that I meet every time we're out here, that it's a long, longer term, it's another 25 years is what we're looking at. 20 years.
20, yes.
That if the current occupants are agreeing that the town owns them, they're moving forward this lease and we own the town owns them, I'd also like to see that they actually have the option to renew it. If I've been, if I've been living in the same house for the next 20 years and then I lose the boathouse that I've been leasing for the last 20 years because I haven't left, I'd like to see that opportunity because I do see the rights of the people that have held those boathouses for so long. They've got a lot of sweat equity in them, they've got a lot of memories in them. So I think there needs to be a balance as we transition in, in the future as people sell their homes and move out of town and opens opportunities for other residents to have them. But if you're still here, I mean, the Fags are an easy example. They haven't left, they've been here a long, long time. You know, and I'm occupied since the 60s. It's hard for me to just say, you know, none of that matters. So that would be something I'd like to see added, at least they have the option. They're a town resident, they can renew it and not just a cut, it's back to the lottery system.
Thanks, sir. Ms. David, did you, I see you turning your head. Anyone have some comments? Ray Hill, for a second.
Thank you. I actually found a lot of workshops inclined to continue the lease as they are, but I am now, since then, agree with Councilperson Divid for our hard respects in my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, sir. Glad I'm sitting closest to the door. Thank you all for your hard work on this and I know it's a struggle. I have no question in my mind that the town owns the land upon which the boathouses sit. I think we can all agree on that point. I'm not convinced, however, that the town can claim ownership of the boathouses. I haven't seen any documentation to support this other than the current lease. And I'm not convinced that section 12 applies to the structures as well as the site. I've seen plenty of quick claim deeds on Orange County Comptroller site coming back at least 50 years, although currently there's no evidence of earned ownership on the site for Mr. Fraser or Mr. Gentry. So I'm wondering if they have a quick claim deed or some documentation proving ownership. These residents have bought and sold these structures in good faith over the last 100 years. I don't think it's right to distinct these structures and deprive them of any and all equity, especially if we're not going to require them to pay a fair market rate for access to the site. The current lease is indicating, and I quote, "Lessee owns the boathouse, which is located on property below the high watermark, et cetera." The current leases also state that the tenants will have up to 30 days to remove the building's materials, et cetera, at the end of the lease if they so choose. This further indicates to me that they own the structures. Our most recent executive summary states, and this is from December 2020, United Atlas, "Please note, the town does not own the boathouses themselves, just the access. However, should the tenants not exercise their rights to remove the items from the boathouses as of March 2021, then the town gains the right to those items left beyond," end quote. I understand the desire to clear all this up once and for all. I, I wouldn't want to go through this if you paid me for this position. We have friends, we have family, we have neighbors. It's not an enviable position to be in. I think this position stems from the fact that, that these folks have had the use of the town's land and access partially to the upper chain of lakes for essentially pennies on the dollar for what it would cost to have that access elsewhere. And that creates some consternation with other neighbors and an image problem, I think. Frankly, if we're considering giving these same folks a 20 or 25 year lease to continue using these boathouses and charging them a fair market amount of rent, insurance, taxes, and other costs for that access, then what's the point of claiming ownership? Will it decrease the burden on administration, which was our original goal? I don't think it will. Will it decrease our liability? I don't think it will. Will it enable other residents a better opportunity to lease a boathouse? Not for at least 20 years unless they move. If, if the current owners don't want to pay the lease, excuse me, current boathouse users don't want to pay the lease, they can sell the boathouse to someone who will. If they don't want to pay the lease, they're still subject to code enforcement, et cetera. If they abandon the structure, then we can discuss taking ownership at that time. We've already got measures in place for that. If other residents in town want a boathouse, they can make the owner an offer they can't refuse to purchase it, just like every other property in town. We will then transfer the lease. One caveat to this, I would request that we make it so that residents can only have one boathouse lease at any given time, so as not to monopolize the site. Others may disagree with me on this and I hate to see this go to court to decide this issue once and for all, but that's what it takes. And so I think we can work together, get this worked out. The current lease does have a number of items that need to be tweaked. Counselor and I spoke about that the other day and Jerry pretty much nailed half, half of what we talked about. So we know that, you know, it needs to be changed. But I, if we do have to go to court, that's fine. I'd rather not do that, but I just do not currently need enough information to make any other determination than I previously stated.
So just for clarification, are, are you stating that you would be in support of expanding or adopting the, the current draft lease? Counselperson.
I, I would, with the exception of, caveat, the exception of the town owns the structures. I think that's the big issue that needs to be resolved either legally or if the current owners or boathouse users agree to that, fine, I'm, I'm good with moving forward with that. If not, I can't support that. Thank you.
Where's that?
I guess to simplify, to keep it short, I don't think there's really much that it's weighed me to go, you know, any different direction that we had consent for at the, the last workshop. I thought the negotiations that were in place of adding more than I originally, you know, wanted to with the 10 years we started out. I think it was five and we moved to 25. And that was based off recommendation of the historic court. And the reason for that increase to the 25 years is realization, especially in the position they are now and sweat equity and actual financial equity that we put into the boathouses to, you know, get them up to the standards that they should be, that there's still be, you know, that extra time, you know, to hold them. And to not allow any assignments that would have, of course, rights to ownership. Now, we'd be able to, if we could negotiate a lower term lease that we could potentially look at, you know, assignments or, or things of that nature, but with a longer 25 year lease, but it is on basis of the amount of work and much of the, of the boathouses.
So your, so your thought is to take from a 20 year lease to a 25 year lease then?
Whatever. We, we had that range, uncomfortable.
I think the current one we have in front of us.
But, but what I would like to, tonight is come an agreement principal ownership, you know, kind of like the term of that lease and, you know, what happens at the end of it. And I believe that the lease does need to be cleaned up. You know, there wasn't much opportunity, you know, the framework is laid now, it's the time for the, the tenants to put their input in. The council gets some input and the tenants can get their input in. I think that can't be hammered out pretty quickly, but we probably should. Well, probably we need to figure out the principles tonight, which I thought that the workshop was, was hammered out, but now it's like potentially the work out of directions.
I, I don't think that it's fortified different directions necessarily. Counsel can, can weigh in here. I think that if, if it's counsel's general direction and, and I'm like counting, it sounds like it's counsel's general direction to take the current lease or the current draft lease, make some amendments to that and work our way through that until we have, someone we can bring back to council at the next meeting. Do you feel differently? I know you guys feel differently, I'm just, but I'm counting up here, so if that's the direction we're gonna go. And Mayor, you've heard my direction, I said. I'm sorry, sir.
I said you heard my thoughts earlier about the hard reset that doesn't align with, with continuing with the current lease.
I, I understand it. I'm just looking at it as I, I speak to counsel. I'm hearing from three counsel, they will get voted, but I'm hearing from three and that's what it looks like we're gonna do. So maybe it's time to put a motion on the table and we'll discuss it further. Heather, did you have a comment at this point?
I think I still have a big question about what to do with the ownership issue.
The question I was asking was Mr. Martini, Counselor Martini was, are you saying that in the lease it states that the ownership is with the tenants or the town?
The new lease?
Yes.
I, I'm opposed to the line that says that the town owns the boathouse. I think it's unnecessary at this point that we're gonna continue with a 20 year lease. I mean, unless the current owners are amenable to that for a 20 or 25 year lease, I think we're gonna end up in court. And what I'd like to do is prevent that. I don't think it's, it's worth it to assume ownership when you've got, you know, 100 years of quick claim deeds. I don't know if there's any other form or function for transferring ownership of a structure that doesn't have a land with it other than a quick claim deed, I guess. Have you ever done a title search? There's just too many questions in my mind about how the town is establishing ownership. I don't think that, I have not seen any documentation stating that we do have ownership. I have seen lots of documentation that the, the residents have ownership. Have we ever done a title search on this?
Yes, we have. And all that the title search came up with for the quick claim deeds.
Say that again.
The only thing that the title search came up with were the quick claim deeds. There was nothing else in there. But the quick claim deed, as we've talked about before, you only can enter the interest that you have. So if you have no interest, if you go and build a structure on someone else's property and you quick claim it to someone else, you've not given them anything.
And the only reason I brought that up was, again, the current lease states that the ownership goes, again, at the 25th meeting, it was to state that once and for all, the town owns the boathouses. And I just want to make sure that Councilmember Stapp and Councilmember Williams are on the same page as Councilmember Martini relative to the ownership question, whether it goes to the town or to those residents.
I have not seen anything through history to show it's anything above the town's ownership.
That would be in conflict of Councilman Martini's position.
And I think that's the important part that we have to hammer out, which is otherwise.
We're back.
This is 1986.
Well, I'm, I'm in the same, I'm the exact opposite. I haven't seen anything that, that to me effectively establishes ownership of these structures to the town.
But Counselperson Martini, do you agree that the town owns the property underneath?
Yes, absolutely.
So, are we all in agreement, counsel, on that? I mean, you go to the base, I guess. I'm the in front of the. I mean, I know you're smiling, I mean, like, like I'm crazy. That's exactly what it is. You've got a situation where it doesn't matter what you put in writing. It gets renegotiated.
That was the reason that I originally was asked. But it's a gradual, huge long lease was that the exact fact that we could sell the lease, which would give you.
So we, so we all agree that property underneath belongs to the town. The town. And the boathouse, so the woods, the wood and the nails may or may not belong to.
That's the question. That's not the question for the owners. I mean, we, I believe that's the question that the owners keep presenting is, I believe that they agree that the town owns the land and the repair rights.
Yeah, perhaps we can ask the, the boathouse owners or lessees are here now, perhaps we can ask them if the town is willing to do the 20 or 25 year lease. Are they willing to say that the ownership is with the town? And then we can get an answer from them.
That, that's fine. Let's do that. Let's ask that question. Who, who's, who's representing tonight? George, is that you?
And several others up there.
Well, he's written the most.
There's a couple of things that were missed, I think. And I can't, I, I can speak for myself and I don't know that I can put words into mouths of other boathouse owners. One of the claims, and I failed to miss it in my talk, I went right past that paragraph. But the claim that the owners would make if we were to go to court would be that we have adverse possession for 100 years unopposed by the town. That's a pretty strong argument. I think my non-legal opinion would be that we might win that case, but that depends on the judge getting it. The crux of that, though, is that you guys have eminent domain power. So even if we spend $120,000 going to court and we win, you are gonna win the war because you can take those boathouses anytime you want. So for the public good. So I don't know. I'm 67 years old. I'm not gonna be using a boathouse in 20 years. You have to get up on a six inch board to get to my boat. I'm not gonna be able to use that boathouse in 20 years. So me personally, I could live with the town owning them. Here, here's the way I look at this, though. I agree that the town probably owns the, the land to the high watermark. The state owns below the high watermark, which is where the boathouses are. They're on, on land below the high watermark. So it's really complicated.
But there's, but there's no survey, there, there's no, there's no survey there.
Yes, there is. You, you paid for a survey in 19, I forgot the date.
But the state owns the repair rights.
No, you own the repair rights.
I mean, I mean the, the town.
The state grants the owner of the land and the boat being high watermark contiguous with the water repair rights. So I have no question, you own repair rights. The ownership of the boathouses, I don't know. And like I said, it's, it's a legal thing and we both have strong arguments. And the only way it's decided officially would be in court and we can't win that. And we can't win that, that, so George, so a couple things, sir. So number one, it's not a war, I promise. Number two, I just want your opinion, are you okay with that? Well, I personally might be okay with that depending on what we do with the rest of the lease. I want to talk about it. You guys are not forming an agreement, we haven't negotiated once. We have not negotiated, you have dictated what we are assigning.
So George, let me, let me, let me correct that a little bit because, listen, this was a good faith negotiation right up until the point where it, it became propaganda and we had to stop it.
Who, who was doing the negotiations?
We were, that's what we were having the lease drafted for, so we negotiated.
You, you was in the work town council.
That is, that's where we ended up, it's not where we wanted to go. So it's certainly not for either of you, I can tell you that a hundred percent.
Okay. So personally. So personally, based on my age, I could live with town ownership. But I'm not happy about it, I don't think it's right. And that's only because of function of my age, I mean, I'm kind of on being here, but I probably won't be able to get up on that boathouse walkway in my boathouse to get to my boat from that age. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm always thinking for me, I don't know.
We'll just talk it in everybody.
But anyway, those are some of the other issues that are out there. The ownership piece is not totally based on quick claim deeds, it's based on adverse possession.
That's an uphill battle, but I, I hear you and I understand, but I don't want to litigate it here, but I just want, it's me. Jerry, do you want to give us your thoughts, sir?
It's a misunderstanding that, that the town owns, that we're renting the boathouse. We're not renting the boathouse. What we are renting is a part of the road white right-of-way that gets us to the boathouse. Every time somebody drives down the street, turns into their house, they're crossing a road right-of-way. And I guarantee you, nobody else is paying rent. That's the only thing we're paying rent for is the use of the road right-of-way to get to state-owned property on which our boathouse is.
Okay.
Okay. Are, so are you, are you okay or not okay?
With the twenty years?
Well, are you okay with the twenty years and are you, are you okay?
Hell, I'm seventy-two, I don't even buy green bananas. So, uh, yeah, I, I could live with twenty years. If that's what you're looking for.
Okay, well, I'm looking for that and then I'm looking for the other piece of something, are you okay with it being, being owned by the town or not? The, the wood, you're, you're.
I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to see another lease before I committed to that. Because this is, all right, I'm not going to tell you the right thing to do.
All right, I'll get it. Thank you. I don't think we're going to pull through everybody because I don't think that's going to get us anywhere. So, uh, I mean, I think at this point, we can take this lease and we can agree to make some amendments to it. If we want to designate someone to negotiate that, that's fine. But, but otherwise, I, I mean, I don't, there's not an easy way forward here. It, may I?
Sure.
If the owners are, uh, open to town ownership and a twenty-year lease with possibly an extension or options to renew. I'm fine with that also, I just want to make sure that, you know, that they're on the.
That's the motion that counsel would need to make.
Mayor, if I can add one more thing, I have a, a succinct and good list of points from the attorney from the boathouse.
Yes, I saw that and they're very reasonable.
Very reasonable and I think if that is the main consensus of the lessees right now, that we could work through those items.
But the ownership issue wasn't, was it one of the items on the list? I did not think so. So that's why I'm just trying to get us through that so we don't end up here again. So, so to Heather's point, uh, counsel did, counsel both vote and they have a list of the items that sure include the things that, that Jerry has mentioned as well as some of the other things that have been mentioned here for potential discussions. So if that list is used to have those potential discussions, then what we need to agree upon here tonight is just the premise that Mr. Martini just spoke of. So if counsel is comfortable with moving forward with a twenty-year lease with town ownership of the boathouse, then we can approve that tonight and have counsel bash out the rest.
I'm comfortable with that principle and I'm all for sitting down at tables and coming up with an amenable, you know, lease as beneficial of both parties, but again, I don't think there was any battles out of this lease. It was just, nobody had a framework to start with. It's not like the, the tenants had brought anything to the table, somebody had to start with the negotiations. I was actually quite surprised that, you know, we didn't get anything prior to this meeting of, hey, I don't like this, or can we change this, we just keep going round and round about the history of it. We're just going to end up nineteen eighty-six, back in twenty years, we're going to still take care of it now. And I felt like in good faith and olive branch that twenty years was to help settle this. You know, it's much more than some of us may be comfortable with. But in turn, we established a hard line. Established what who owns what and when it's going to lease. And furthermore, after we're done, I'd like to find out, you know, probably move forward with what the process is after the lease expires. So we're not running around with their, you know, tails at the end of it, okay, they expired, so we got six months to, to figure it out. I think that should be established now, you know, let's help future councils out, as nobody's helped us at this point.
Well, I mean, I think to some degree, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't think we're, I don't think we're helping future council out at all, to be honest with you, but I think we're doing exactly what was done twenty years ago. But if that is, if that's the direction that, that counsel feels like they want to go and they're most comfortable with, I respect that. And, um, so we'll just need a motion to have a vote on it. So let's have a motion that defines the, the two things that we're talking about, which is the twenty years and the ownership of the structure by the town, which is, I believe, where we're at at this point.
My, my question would be is just putting this in a lease, is that ownership? It, it obviously hasn't worked because the lease has to change over the years and it spreads home, it's not, um, you know, is that, is there something more concrete that can be done now so we're not having this debate? What's that?
Quick claim deeds, well, I know at least two parties would be very interested in one of those.
Um, I mean, generally you do a reclaim deed or a bill of sale, um, unless you can establish that you have the ownership interest one hundred percent when you do the warranty deed, so those are, the only instruments that I think of.
So Mayor's point would be probably are just.
Absolutely, a hundred percent. Which wasn't my intent, and I mean, I knew that sometimes things don't work out exactly like you intend, but, um, well, it is, it is what it is, we can't figure it out.
I don't mean to stir the pot, but it's ironic that, that the solution to this is a quick claim deed.
I was actually, I was actually joking about that.
Oh, you are.
I, I mean, to me, when I look at the clear language in the document, that's what we, if you were going to go before a judge or arguing something, so you have clear language that establishes it and we can do a bill of sale that makes the council comfortable, but I'm not sure, but it does much.
I guess there's no way to, to have a title or have, uh, some kind of warranty deed or something of that nature for this, the structure if the town does get ownership. And, and going back to my, um, misgivings about this, not willing to, to move forward with the lease and, you know, changes in twenty-year leases and renewal policy if the current owners, you know, would accept that, begrudgingly or not. If, if they don't, I think we're going to end up in court and I want to avoid that. And I, I want to make sure that they are on board with this and we have some negotiation, some discussion before we, you know, finalize things. Obviously, we're going to keep doing that one way or the other.
So you, you, I, I, I don't think we're agreeing upon, but are we at this point?
Well, essentially, if you agree to, you're not agreeing upon renewal per se, but you're agreeing on moving forward with lease in front of us with certain caveats and certain negotiations on it. So ownership and twenty years being the two major ones. The other, the others, the other minor issues to be worked out between council. Is that not, am I misunderstanding, Martini was referring to renewal of the twenty years?
Well, and it's counsel. That's what I brought up, I brought up for the fact that they're giving up. If they're agreeing to the, the town owning the ownership. That they have the option to renew it if they run a full term.
They might as well do it in ninety-nine year.
That's what I started with, I mean, you know, if, if I was in issues, that's what I'd be asking for. Uh, I'm looking at it from their equity too, I'm in agreement with Bill, they've been passing these things around for, you know, a hundred years. So it's hard to argue possession at this point. Uh, yes, it's on town property and things were done differently back then.
There was no sunshine at all.
But, yeah. So, but I do have a hard time going, I'm going to give everything up and then twenty years, I'm still living here, I'm still loving the winter here and, oh, by the way, I can't redo my lease.
Over the years, the releases that were signed, we're giving up possession.
I, I have to say, I think that in terms of negotiating another twenty years on top of the twenty years, I, I don't, is that a place that we need to go this evening down? And I think that for the sake of, for the sake of, uh, clarity, we ought to stick with.
But that, we ought to stick with what we're talking about. But that's agreeing with them saying we don't yet. That's the caveat.
What was your take at that point? Well, it's semantic.
I may have stated that in the past leases, I mean, and here we are, it's fine.
Well, I, I, I agree, but, I'm sorry.
So what difference does it make?
Well, I don't know that it makes a difference if you, if you agree to continue to renew them, it doesn't matter who has necessarily the right to ownership. You know, you, the town can own them, but we're just renewing for forty years. None of this will be around.
Well, that's my point earlier, what difference does it make? If we're going, if we take the, take ownership and we then charge these boats four hundred dollars a month, which I think is a go rate, so we're, we're removing all equity from him, any possibility of, of covering some of that equity if they decide to sell. And then we're all, we're charging them on top of that, starting on the boathouse fee here.
I, 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 I agree with Councilmember Williams, I want to make this fair.
Can I, can I speak?
Not today, sir, I'm not sure.
Yes, go ahead, but if you'll just come up and just give us your name and your address, I don't want to, I don't want to do a whole bunch of it.
My name is Doug Fay, I'm Gary's brother, I live five oh six fucker street. I think a simple way would just sell you the quick claim deeds and then, and then you, you know you got the ownership, we're getting something out of it. How about that?
Bingo.
Thank you.
There was no charge.
No charge, well, I mean, I mean, that's a determined price.
It worked about you, whatever it is.
Like, when you. I, I mean, I just don't, again, I don't understand, so now you own something that, but you leased it out for forty years. You know, I mean, it's, they probably already own it anyways.
I'm looking at this from a, from a perspective of, you know, if I owned one of these boathouses, I paid good money to somebody who paid good money to somebody who paid good money for the last sixty, eighty years. I, I own a nineteen fifty-eight Volkswagen Beetle, I bought it thirty years ago. It doesn't have a title, I got a bill of sale. And I put it in storage for years and I spent thousands of dollars on storage, much more than the car is worth. If at the end of that storage, the store's owner told me that he was going to keep the car and I could drive it for four hundred dollars a month if I wanted to, I would be outraged. So I mean, that's where I'm looking, that's the point I'm looking from on this. I would, I would love to have this issue resolved and cooperation across the board. Maybe we can discuss quick claim options with the owners or boathouse users. But just to claim ownership after all this time, all these, you know, here's a quick claim deed from nineteen seventy-two. There's three others beyond this.
Now, there's, there's, there's existing lease language from nineteen eighty-four that everyone signed twice.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't see it, I don't see, I don't think the premises, I don't agree that the premises, uh, well, is, includes the structure. Obviously it doesn't because the owners are capable of taking the structures with them, which I would hate to see. My number one goal when we started this was to make sure that the boathouses stay as they are. You know, for the charm and character of the town, ambiance, whatever, I'd hate to see them go because of this. I think there's a solution. Word sounded like he was not open to discussing it. And, you know, coming to some kind of agreement. And yeah, we had this, we had to negotiate, we had to discuss because the social media circus came to town and.
All that's rough.
Kills discussion.
It killed, it killed discussion. I wish we had a brewery right now, we could all get to a standup.
Just, just to comment on something you said about, uh, you're trying to preserve them. I think that's probably the only way to ensure that they are preserved as a town of ownership because otherwise all the reasons that are written as long as it's done, like you just take the wooden.
That's not in the current lease, that we're discussing that.
It is not in the current draft.
Yeah, I, I understand that, you know.
No, I mean, I, I see your point from the previous lease, but you're right, because you can take it apart and haul it off to your house. You know, which again, it's not, it's not like, as I say, it's not a war, it's just a matter of, there's, there's a lot of ambiguity on both sides, so it's a matter of how do you come up with something that makes sense, that's reasonable. But I really, you know, just it pains me that some, not me, but somebody from here, or twenty years from now, probably our kids, have the same discussion.
They didn't vote for me.
Kids didn't. All right, so perhaps. Put something together and move forward, so, um, I will make the suggestion then that we, that we, uh, go ahead and table this for now. We'll have counsel and one representative from each party try to negotiate something out in terms of the ownership issue, in terms of the length. But I think twenty, it should be twenty years more at this point, I think. But at least let's, let's get a good foothold and see if we can go from there. Counsel, will you be able to that? We need a motion to that.
I think all other nine needs direction, so it's going to be a council member negotiating the leases or is it going to be?
Counsel, so counsel, please pardon yourself, and we'll have a representative from the owners and a representative from town council.
Okay, and then the basis, again, because we're working off the, at twenty-fifth meeting as far as the consent, so it's the twenty years based on three comments. And then, again, this is going to come down to the ownership question.
Correct.
That we keep coming back to because it doesn't seem like there's consensus, majority consensus on that one.
So let me ask an interesting question here. If, so if we, what do we lose if we don't have ownership? So we, well, we, I mean, if you don't have ownership of the bill, you still have ownership of the property, you're not going to give that up. So we're really talking about ownership of the wood. From a, from a town perspective, where does that? What, what impact does that have?
About actually owning the boathouses themselves.
Owning or not owning.
Well, again, I'll refer back to, I get, I think George Boyce's letter back in two thousand and one, I think it was July card to the, um, new leases being signed, went through the history of the discussions and negotiations prior to the first lawsuit that was filed, correct? They negotiated the lease in nineteen eighty-six, um, which again, I think was an avoidance of going to court and having a sense of determining who the owner was. So they compromised on that fifteen-year lease that was reelected in two thousand and one and that's what prompted Mr. Boyce to draft that letter in two thousand. prompted Mr. Boyce to draft that letter in two thousand and one stating his involvement, his history, and his thoughts on, again, kicking the can down the road. Um, but from a town standpoint, again, we're saying, okay, if you want to renegotiate the lease and you want the ownership of the boat house, then it goes back to uh, Councilmember staff's statement. Is that, what better way to make sure that we can maintain those, make sure that they're up to standard if this one's their own?
And then I agree with you on, on Judge Boyce's comment as he was legal counsel for the town at the time. It was very deliberate what he did. It was not an accident. He did that intentionally um, to not only settle the lawsuit, but to make sure that we weren't having these exact same conversations that we will continue to have. On the first one, I say, what I didn't wanna do was kick this down the road, and what we're doing is kicking this down the road. So, I mean, I do have frustration there. It is not, I don't have a dog and a hunt. It, it, but it is, I just wanna make sure we do what is best for the town and the community and come up with something that was reasonable and fair. I felt that we were there. Um, and I think we ought to work on those nine pieces and get, get there. Um, at, at the very least. And I'm, you know, I feel like that's what we ought to be able to do. But what I hear from council is that they're, they're not comfortable with, they're comfortable with moving the lease beast forward, but they're not comfortable with moving the ownership beast forward. So if we don't have consensus or majority on that, I, I don't know where we're left to go. You know, and I know, and you're looking at it like, good, you gotta figure that out. Um, and that's, that's the only way to determine how to, to work on that issue. So, you know, I apologize for not being super eloquent on this, but I mean, we have to, you know, to, to George's point, we have to talk about it and figure it out. Um, because I don't think we have enough consensus here to, to draw on.
Well, Heather and I would be more happy to, but again, with whoever you represent as town council members and the boat house tenants to work out a lease and see if we can come to a meeting of minds with the understanding that the current lease expires in August, so we're gonna have to do maybe a month-to-month holdover, Heather or?
We can do that.
Yeah, so we would have to do that until we actually reach an agreement.
For no more than three months. I think we can get this done in a week. Two weeks. I, I don't think it's gonna take that long. I think it's a very small amount of sticking points. You know, moving, as one of the members has stated, we haven't negotiated at all, haven't talked at all back and forth about, about this lease, this lease that is before us. So we need to at least give them courtesy of some input on that or some discussion. Maybe not input, because if they want input, they should run the town council. But we should at least, you know, have the opportunity to discuss what's in there and get some feedback from it. And hopefully come to an agreement on the ownership part. I would love for the town to own these boat houses. And we could put this to bed forever and then no one would have to deal with this issue ever again. But as I stated earlier, I wanna make sure that it's agreeable to people who have had these structures for longer than I've been alive. No offense, Terry. Guy person down.
Just a quick, quick question for Councilor Williams. So Section twelve, the surrender of premises in two thousand and one lease agreements, at the expiration of the lease term, lessee shall, shall surrender the ownership and possession of the premises in as good a state and condition as they were at the commencement of this lease, with reasonable use, wear, tear, and damages by the elements excepted. Provided however, lessee will have the right to remove all lumber, building materials, boat oyster, and fixtures within thirty days of termination, should it choose to do so, provided said removal is not prohibited by law. Is it your opinion that that includes the structure? Because the way I'm reading that is that's building material and, and real property insulted with it.
Yes, that is my opinion. And when you read it in conjunction with section five and section six and section seven, which talks about the premises, premises shall be used and occupied by lessee exclusively for storage of the watercraft. Um, and they, they know the condition of the premises and accept it at the same condition. Uh, they agree to maintain the premises in good repair and clean, safe, sanitary condition. Yes, I mean, all those things together. That is my opinion.
The, the, the structure is in fact.
Part of the premises.
Part of the premises.
Any further, Councilperson Depp? Thanks, sir. Councilperson Williams?
Um, Mr. Fay? Either one of you, you guys signed it. You were here. What was the intent when you signed it? What did you understand would happen at the end of the lease? And you signed.
Correct.
You're the only two that I know that actually been through this all.
If memory serves me correctly, it was, it was a ten-year lease with a ten-year option after that. Now, this is twenty years ago.
Correct.
You know, my understanding that if, if the, at the end of the twenty years, the town would take it back.
Okay.
But then all this started coming up again and well, here, here we are after twenty years and I think, I think we discussed this one out on the council back in the seventies.
And that was my question was when you guys signed it twenty years ago, because I think you guys would be the only ones that are still left standing. What was your understanding of that paragraph that the town would take up this twenty years?
You don't want that.
I know, it was twenty years ago, but it was the lease. It was the legal year signing. That's, you know, everybody else wasn't there. So my, my question was that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Those are good clarifying points, thank you, Bill. Let's, um, let's move forward with negotiating this out and, uh, so now, council, who would like to be the council representative?
I'll do it. Unless you guys.
I voted yes. All right, well, um, council, any, um, anyone else? Right. Disagree? I desire to do that. I wanna make sure, you, you wanna do that and negotiate that, okay, all right. All right, we'll have Councilperson Martin. We work with, uh, council and who's gonna be the representative from the boat house contingent?
I think I'd not make more votes.
You're gonna make, okay.
No, I, I don't know. I, I think.
To be out, well, you don't have to decide right now. No, I, I, I can't decide right now. We'll, we'll have a hug fest in the next day or two and then decide. Yeah, that's fine. All right. Hope the rest of the agenda is more fun than that. All right, council, next up is, uh, financial, uh, this is the Bay Shore Weir construction. Uh, since a five thousand two hundred dollar little bid from PJQ Inc. concrete. Tonya, did you have any comment on this agenda?
Nothing other than this should have been done, the previous public works structure was making some of the changes in that community, and it desperately needs to be done. Town engineers looked at it, it definitely needs to be done. We'd like to get it done before we get too much in the rain.
Yeah, that should be a seal. All right.
Don't say that, not done with.
Yeah, right, exactly. Council, we're looking for a motion to approve item nine, which is the Bay Shore Weir construction, not just the five thousand two hundred dollars of bid. PJK Inc.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilperson Depp. Second, second, Councilperson Martin. Do you have any further discussions or questions? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with Councilperson Depp.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Council. Next up is item ten. This is the Butler Basin Stormwater improvements. This is our forty-five percent design approval. And I think we have representative, uh, from KJ and Robert.
Yeah, we do have, um, Ken and our associates here, who's been working on the design of the, uh, Bestie Shore Basin project. We did again for a Costco board that was approved some time ago for the HMGP project. Um, that we would take the design back to town council at forty-five percent and a hundred percent. And then part two, that we would have a public meeting with the residents that are directly impacted um, by the Butler Basin, I think I said Bestie Basin, but it's Butler Basin. We did that. We had positive feedback and negative feedback. Um, so we would ask that, uh, town council go ahead and approve the forty-five percent plans and then part two hundred percent, we'll do the same thing. We'll take it to the public um, for comments and then take it to town council for final approval, understanding that we have a December deadline for the decision to this, to the I was here sitting patiently just answering any questions, but, um, I think we've all been through the process, a lot of you did attend those meetings. Um, and I think it's engineered, engineered well, we had a lot of public participation and were able to, um, um, do that participation, amend and make that design comfortable and, you know, um, friendly to the neighbors that live around that area. Walk, recommend mission.
Excellent, and I do agree, there's been a lot of progress. So council, I believe all of you were at the all of the good quick session that we had on this piece. Um, any further questions, comments, thoughts, concerns, uh, for our KJ representative? Good job, that's good. Took us a little while to get there, but I do think that through a lot of hard work and a lot of input and, and a lot of, you know, critical thinking and reviewing, uh, to, to get us where we wanted to go, I think that, that we're there, so. See nothing else. I guess, do we need a motion to approve this item?
Uh, yes, we do, of course, yes.
Um, council, one for a motion to approve, um, item ten. This is our Butler Basin Stormwater, forty-five percent design approval for improvements.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Councilperson Depp, look for a second. Second, any further discussion from council? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with Councilperson Williams.
Aye.
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 Motion here, you can just, thank you, council. Next up on our.
Thank you, Heather.
Yeah, hey, thanks for hanging out and enjoying that with us.
Uh, we did get a warning yesterday through the projects meeting, but again, my hats off to helping make themselves available, same thing with Tonya, same thing with John, uh, meeting residents, getting us to this point, very important step in the process. And a public buy-in with the project that this matter includes is just commendable.
We learned a lot and I think that it's gonna help us do better projects here out in town, uh, all of us, so, uh, that's a big thing. And if you wanna do more boat house negotiations, you can come back in twenty years. Next up, Councilman Martin would like to present, uh, on the Lake Street Park designation discussion. Councilperson Martin, you, you have, I didn't want to present, I know that, that we did have, uh, some email going back and forth as well. Let's move this to, um, a workshop so we can have some free flow of conversation, but I didn't know if you wanted to have some thought and comment here tonight.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Yes, we, we had at least six letters from residents who are close to the, uh, Lake Street Park, several of which are here today. Um, and I'm sure you've all heard about the issues that we're having at Lake Street Avenue Park as well as Fishing Dock at the end of Fourth Avenue, and also Fernwood. It's all, it's all pretty much the same type of behavior that is incredibly dangerous and detrimental to our community and our residents. And so, um, I don't wanna get into the gory details because there's a lot of it, but it's basically, uh, it's basically turned into a very undesirable situation for these residents. They're in fear of retaliation from the people that, some of the people that come to the parks when the, when the police show up, even they have to call them, uh, they, they don't have peaceful enjoyment of their, their homes or their property any longer. Uh, they're not able to use the parks with their families due to the overcrowding and unacceptable behavior. Uh, it's become so unbearable for, uh, some of our residents, they're now considering selling the property because they just can't deal with it anymore. It's, it's just really a burden to have to deal with this on, you know, basis we have near continuous lease presence at these locations. So, uh, so I've asked staff to look into possibly repaying the Furbat funds that we use to build this dock in, in hopes that then we can change it to residence only or to entail the, uh, the overwhelming party atmosphere that occurs. It's like bird out in the east at this dock. So the best, uh, we, we've discovered that we are able to repay the Furbat funds, you know, there's, there's that's a repay with interest. It's a lot of money. I don't know if it's, if the council's going to do that, but I'd like to discuss it further. You know, I'd like council's support, um, to move forward with a workshop to discuss it, to see if, you know, to discuss what the best course of action is, if any. Excuse me, Parks and Rec Committee has already agreed to support a workshop on this issue, so I would like to move forward with that of council as well.
Thank you, Councilperson Martin. I know that, I know council's aware of, of, uh, the challenges and the enforcement challenges and, um, the resource burden that, that that particular park has become. Um, and I do believe that we wanna have further discussions on those items in the form of a workshop. And the reason, um, just so people are, I wanna make sure clear, the reason we do workshops is because during a workshop, we can have a lot more free flow of conversation, a lot more input from the public in a more informal manner. And it allows us to kind of forge a path, get information, process through all of the information that we need to make good decisions, the pros and cons, and a, and just a setting that is, uh, it's, it's much easier to have those conversations than during a formal council meeting is. Uh, so when you try and negotiate at a council meeting, you see us talking with the boat dock, it just, or with the boat houses, it's difficult to do. So you can have these same conversations back and forth at a workshop and much, much better. And I think that, uh, this council is really proven in depth at using those to get where we wanna go. Um, so, uh, that would be my suggestion, so we can have those good conversations. It is definitely something that we wanna jump on. And I believe we'll also bring up a conversation, a subsequent workshop about Fernwood. Fernwood ties in a lot of these forty-five to forty-five percent design plans for the modern areas as well, so. Um, a lot of progress. I want people to know that, that we're aware and, and looking to do whatever it takes to try to remedy that. We wanna make smart decisions, um, whether that is to pay back funds or whether it's to look at alternatives to that um, or, or some type of compromise that maybe allows us not to have to repay that with the benefit of something similar, so. Let's have those conversations with council and, and staff and residents, uh, and do our best to get there. Clear enough?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I know that staff and, and Chief Ogden and his crew are, are always working on solutions to improve this situation at the, at this and other parks. So I appreciate that, the residents appreciate it. I know we've got, uh, we've got some cameras going and that type of thing. Uh, to, to try and help the situation out. I appreciate that, and I know the residents do also. But, you know, let's, and I appreciate it also if we can look and see if we can go further with this, possibly, uh, rectify the situation. And if things get continued down with that, we'll, we'll do whatever we need to make it so this one's gonna go, everyone's down there, because I know it's, uh, you know, it has its own challenges. I've been down there, keep a good eye on it, so. If we get you paid for being on these cameras, we may be paid for the whole thing potentially, so. It's just a, it is a real burden for everyone that lives down there, as well as, well as all people that have to enforce it. It's a lot of interactivity with law enforcement, which we normally like, but, you know, there's just a a lot of disrespect and you're just worried about where it goes. Well, it's, it's a real safety, a lot of healthy issues too. We just had a couple weeks ago, we had a drowning on the way down the Jetsy Axe. And from what I see, every day, just driving by there. I don't live there, other people do. And what we see every single day is this lifetime for it. It happens in this park, it's just out of control. So, but I appreciate the support and, uh, we're forward to discussing.
All right, we'll do that. I believe we have a date set for the twenty-fourth. And I think we set two workshops up, one for the second, one for the twenty-fourth, am I incorrect?
Yeah, that, that's correct. And we do have, um, we can accelerate the August twenty-fourth ones and possibly August ninth. That's if your schedule's allowed, but that is the scheduled second budget hearing or second budget workshop. If you can hammer everything out, the first budget workshop, and that opens up that date if everybody's available on that day as well. So we could accelerate from the twenty-fourth up to the ninth, uh, understanding again that we have a council meeting on the tenth as well. we have a council meeting on the tenth as well.
Right? Okay.
We could be there on the ninth anyway, it's the second. Yeah, I mean, sort of like we've been pretty good and knocking it out the first work.
I, yes, we'll have less people at the budget meeting than we have here for, for first night, night there too, so it always amazes me, but it's true. So, yeah. We've been pretty successful with our worker staff that we were able to get to be on first night to the first.
Yeah, we're notifying everybody within five hundred feet of the parks for the respective workshops, so if we were to change that date, we would send a notification out again for the earlier date. And it all depends on what happens on the twenty-sixth of July, whether we can just hammer out the budget, get the approvals that we need. Usually the only X factor is healthcare benefits, and we're still working that through.
Great, okay. All right, well, let's see how we do, and see if we can accelerate them out, but let's check all our schedules and see. All right, we're up to mayor and council liaison reports, I think I have certainly said enough tonight. Council, any additional comments? Councilperson Williams, thank you. Appreciate everybody's hard work, and staff's hard work, and all the great volunteers, including the amazing volunteer we got, Keats, who is a hundred percent sure that she lives in the inner. So, but she comes on here, so we will make her an honor. I thought the banking breakfast went really, really well, and I enjoyed seeing everybody. And it was a nice bill of service. Councilperson Depp?
I'm very sorry.
Councilperson Williams, or you're Martini, sir. Not William, Mary's, basically, you know how I do that? Thank you, sir. Councilperson Depp?
Yeah, no long range party board meeting this month, and then Robert, I think you're going to cover the project's highlights.
Yeah, we sent out the project meeting notes this afternoon, and then Tanya has a list of items that she's been working on, and then I'll hit on some of the American Recovery Act and some other appropriations that may be available to the town.
That's appropriate.
Thank you, sir. Ms. David?
Um, yes, the food, food trucks and farmer's market back, they have some vendors coming in and new trucks coming in as well, so, but let's think about that. And I miss the parks and rec food to personal, so Robert, would you like to? So any drink work?
Yeah, there's, there's a few on the street, foreign parks and recreation, looking at locating some playground equipment over at Winter Recreation Center and based on council directions, we're going to have to hold a daily public meeting. It's not like I like holding these public meetings, but it's only fair for the residents that are adjacent to those sites where they want to put a capital improvement, especially one that's going to attract people and attract all the noise, you know, to have some input on what's going into that park, it's unfair. So I understand that, they have three quotes, and, you know, we have some issues with the locations, they want to put the playground equipment. Again, this is something that probably could have been invented a bit early on, but we weren't really privy as far as myself and Tanya, as far as location and what type of equipment because of the changeover and staff. But the location they chose is brought on the subject system for the current restrooms. So we have to figure out, okay, where, if any other location on the site we can place that playground equipment. And then what if any pushback is going to be from the neighbors to the east-west and to the south, or, yes, southeast and west of that project? So remember when we put and sold the volleyball courts, you know, I was out there with thirty residents across the lake, and they're not too happy that we put the volleyball courts on the, on the lake, so it's just fair to look at that. And also looking at adding pickleball courts to that location as well. So in my brain, about that same meeting, see if there's going to be apprehension to that because pickleball courts do generate a lot of noise. If you're not familiar with pickleball, it's kind of like a ping pong adult on a court, and it makes a lot of banging noise when they create it. I'm not, I've seen it once, and it, it's, I guess, a new fact, you see it in villages, you see it every time, many agencies, I'm saying that, you have to be old and flat, but it is a popular sport, it did pull a lot of people, and there's a lot of interest in the possibility of creating a pickleball court and not re-striking the current existing tennis court for pickleball use. I guess there's a different net that you have to use, and a lot of the tennis pros or tennis members don't like having the different lines on the court because it's confusing to them. In addition to that, we talked about Fernwood Park, they are in favor of transitioning that to a public park to a boat ramp. That gives more enforcement abilities for that boat ramp when it comes to parking, does that make it just a boat ramp as far as, when you have a boat ramp pass, is it going to access that? No, residents can still access that, it's just as far as the parking issue. And also discussing, you know, parking on weekdays or weekends on Seventh and Butler Roadways. And that'll be discussed at the workshop. And the same thing with Lake Street Park, when it comes to Furbat funds and some extra enforcement we can do, maybe baby step it until we do the ultimate option, which would be the last resort, which would be prioritization of that park, or making it just resident only, because there's a lot of money that the town would have to repay in order to get that done. So we would have to take some steps and show the residents that are in the area that we are taking enforcement serious and hopefully correcting that issue, mostly in terms of some of the activities that are happening out there. But that's mostly what we talked about at that meeting.
Thank you, and I appreciate Park's input. Those are things that we look for, and it helps us build consensus as we move forward and make any changes as needed. And I know, councilperson David, if you need to, you know, yes, go ahead and go home and take good care of him and tell him we're all praying for him, okay? Thank you. And we will do staff reports, Robert, you want to go first or?
Yes, I think Manny's being a little bashful here too, it's actually a birthday party night and sign language education to the police officers, and that was, even though her husband wasn't having a procedure done, so she's very, you know, with the kind of for that, I know she was probably going to mention that, but we do have another training this Friday at five P M for sign language, because we, again, she'll be interpreting while her coworker or friend does the presentation, so thank you for taking your time doing that.
Absolutely fantastic negotiation. Give them our best.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll start it as brief as possible. We received a strange email today from Representative Demings' office today, I really didn't understand it, and I don't think you as well, Mayor.
Did you see the response? Another response?
I didn't get the response, I think, because I've been here since like four-thirty, but we received an email from Representative Demings' office saying that there was appropriation of seven hundred thousand dollars to the state process school program phase one, and want residents to provide quotes in support of it. So it makes you feel and think that you were getting, given an award of seven hundred thousand dollar grant for that phase one project with Mulley-Moak. But it wasn't specific enough to tell you, yes, you're the one project that we're talking about, and it's very vague and very confusing, so I would love to tell you that we're looking at seven hundred thousand dollars, it goes to a committee vote on the sixteen against federal dollars, and then has to get passed to the House budget at the end of July.
Yes.
Before they go out of session.
So it looks like it's seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it's Demings' only priority, which probably doesn't hurt.
Well, that's great news, I mean.
Yeah, I think it could be great news. It's a line item from Representative Demings, this would be a major boost for school children. She also put some funding in for Wayne Dench Community Center, five hundred thousand, oh, so it's not her only priority. A Kobe Lake Front Park, and emergency generators for OHA public housing. It, it looks pretty close to a line, but.
Right.
I don't think we can, can't open the checking account just yet, but.
No, yeah, we, we had the same issue when we came to state appropriations, we thought we were able to finish the line, and then once the state passed the budget, we were left out. But again, that's great news that Representative Demings was able to go get us to the seven sixty, and we'll keep you updated at the end of July, especially during the budget workshop, and I'll let you know if we were approved for that seven hundred thousand dollars. But that would go to the phase one multi-note path, that would take you from north all the way to Winter Round, Winter Round Nature School. So that's a huge win for us to be able to get that money.
That'd be fantastic.
My Q and A is tomorrow night, if anybody wants to join again, I think my record is about seven attendees, so hopefully we can beat that tomorrow night, if not, I'll enjoy hopefully that off. Seven twenty-six is the budget workshop, seven twenty-seven is the Bessie Basin workshop. I know people are asking for the draft plan, it's under review by Tanya and John once their, I think it divided comments to KHA, and then KHA revises it, once it's revised, will make it public as far as advertising to the residents that are directly impacted and also for the general population as well to take a look at it. August second, you have to do the Fernwood workshop, August ninth could be the Lake Down, but again, that's subsequently scheduled for August twenty-fourth. American Recovery Act funds, we received yet another notification from Department of Revenue and State, telling us to make sure we have done some of our, all that stuff, and I think it's being repetitious now, but hopefully we're going to start seeing money flow and get into local governments. I know there was some discussion related to the C D G grants, because of income levels, it's hard for us to be qualified for that, because I know some councilmembers saw it on the news, and were asking if we would be able to do that. We did do a survey of the town, again, our income level is higher up, and we don't have the economic base to generate the jobs that are just by C D G. Everybody always asks for Oakland got a million dollars for their wastewater extensions, that's because they're generating jobs. Ten jobs equals X amount of dollars, we just don't have that type of.
Ten, ten per thirty-five thousand or something.
Yes.
One, one job, thirty-five thousand, that's how they're.
Correct.
We still have the L M I here.
Correct. And it has to be, you know, again, we've done this survey, we can pay money for that again if we get rocking at that income level. And then we do have a RFP for the audit services that is going to be due on Friday. We did put an RFP out for IT services that we picked up by Oakland. As you know, the town of Midbury in Oakland, Oakland has a IT person specifically for their admin and their school, but we utilize the same firm for the police department and our police department and our town admin. It's been about five years and it's overdue for a RFP, so we sent out their receipt, we can get a better level of quality service as far as what we're getting right now, in addition to that, a good price. And then the project meetings have been submitted, and take a look at those, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us.
That's fine, sir. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, RFP certainly woke up some folks, people were the IT people over there, so that demonstration, it's actually good to do that one if you want to. Had several new facilities meeting, so we're keeping up with that. Again, Monday, as Robert said, Ms. McCalla-Cops had also councilwoman, David Axory, performed law enforcement in the deaf community training, went over very well, did it Friday night, you guys always welcome the tenth. Attended CJ advisory meeting, we also did host a central Florida police use meeting there, it was our turn up, and, and back there to make sure we hosted that meeting, so we had some good conversations there. School starts back August tenth, so it's literally along that corner, it's not going to be long, just remember I'll send something out on social media, expect some strong enforcement, delays, traffic to start back up, and that'll be the time when we want to kind of reengage with the traffic plans and things of that nature, and probably put it in. I know a few people have asked about some of the surveys, the surveys really aren't, speech surveys aren't really worth putting out in the summertime, but we don't have this traffic partner pattern, so we'll start back on doing some of those then. Also, I think you guys got the email August twenty-ninth, eight to nine A M, which came through Congresswoman Bell Lemon's office, will be there in their post office, dedication to Robbie Jones, will be there on that day, I'll make sure that you guys pick that up every night again, I'll make sure I send it out next week. And the last thing is, we just reapplied for this year's JAG grant for another ten thousand dollars, so we should be getting that soon. Questions?
I do, but it may be a public worst question. I'm just wondering if we start school maybe in some of those areas, because like we started doing those no right turn straight aheads, and then COVID happened, you know, it seemed to be like it was catching on, possibly working, and maybe when school gets back in, we put the counters back out, they're, you know, kind of track to see how they're actually doing it, because we'll probably be as close to normal as pre-COVID as we've ever been, I think, in August.
Yeah, yes, sir, that's correct. Okay. Go ahead, Tanya, sorry.
Good evening, council, so your public works team has been very busy. One of the major projects that the town manager mentioned is the cameras going into the three parts systems. This has been quite an expensive project to attempt to manage, because we have to get Duke Energy relative to power, we have to get with Spectrum relative to internet connections, and we also have a, need to have a certified electrician actually on those high voltage lines for that system. So the good news is that we have met with Spectrum, we've already signed a contract with them to get them to give us the internet service at those three parts. In addition, subsequently, the police department asked me to include an inter-rack for spectrum services, so if your cameras are in your rack, can then be done remotely as well. So we were able to add that into that system as well, and they've out to look into it today, so I was happy about that. Secondly, we have to work with Duke Energy, two of the parks are already fairly well set up, and that is Lake Down Park and Fernwood Park. Electricity is there and available, it's just a service call to the business line. The one that's the most complicated is Lake Street Park. Good news is, though, that Duke Energy came out and, and actually were able to mark a line on the park side of the street. That was going to be the issue, whether the power was on the other side of the street, and that would be a costly issue for us. It's not, there's a line on the other side of the street on the park side of the street, so they're just going to need to actually splice that line and set us a pedestal there near the hole for cameras. So we're making good progress with these, these parks. And hoping to have the camera equipment in sometime next week, we'll be able to make the service calls to Duke Energy for the two parks to get the electrical run. Spectrum's going to get that internet in for us, and so those two parks will come off fairly quickly. Lake Street Park, Duke Energy is designing that system, once they design it, they will send me over an invoice, and we will get that scheduled to get that pedestal as well. So that's probably more before we project at this point in time. But the good news is, is that once we get all of this done, now those parks are ready, those security systems are in place, and going forward, we'll have a better way to notify town staff and the police department of activity to any places those parks. So a good end is in sight, and I just ask for everyone's patience as we work through these over until we provide them. The other thing that we've worked on is an RFP that was due at least this morning for Lake Management Consulting, the town manager you mentioned a couple weeks ago, we were looking for someone to kind of come in and help us with that, so an RFP was due at least this morning, on, will be hopefully on start. The Main Street Bridge repeating, quick painting group has been given here to complete this work, and they told me this afternoon that they would be there before the end of this week to address the repeat issue on that bridge, and that's at the end of Old Bird Lane, that bridge there. One of the things we're working on today is fixing the pavers around Town Hall, that's why you're sneaking barricades out there, we didn't quite finish that, we had, we got twenty-two done today, and we plan to finish the other fifteen tomorrow, so you'll see those pavers coming down a little bit. Secondly, we trimmed the great mural at Main Street, Second Avenue, some residents were complaining that there was a line of side issue there, so we're going to get that taken care of. We also graded the areas at three, two, six, Oakdale, and precision safety sidewalks, as a PO to start repairing sidewalks throughout town. When most vendors, they're behind schedule, or they have a heavy schedule or workload to do this work, but they have said that they would be tackling the following pilot areas for us shortly. Sidewalks around Town Hall and off of Main Street and Sixth and Fifth, West, East, Sixth Avenue, Main Street from First Avenue to Seventh Avenue, three sections of sidewalks within the Willows Gardens Drive area, and then we were also asked earlier to look into Chase Drive area, so I'll be asking them to put that on the pilot list as well. So we do have good news on that front. We've also completed four additional areas for new road, new road base, the new dirt road material. We did Butler Street between Second and Third, we did East Eleventh Street, we did Eight Dirt Main, that's the end of Eight Dirt Main, that was a, that was a pretty extensive project that those residents down there have been struggling with for quite some time. We were able to dig that area out, bring the new material in, and so all of that black muck that was happening whenever it rained has subsided. The residents at the end of that road actually emailed the public works team to thank us for coming up with that solution. We'll get a more current solution with one of the projects that John Fitzgibbon is working on, but we didn't feel it was fair for that, for those residents to deal with that until the project was underway. So we're really get in there and tackle that area and very happy with it. And then, of course, we did forest between Third and Tacky Stalls, that has all the new paper base material now, and that road is opening up really nicely. So I love driving down that, seeing how good it looks, I don't mind saying that. The next area that we plan to tackle with the new dirt, dirt base is the end of Ridge Wood, Ridge Wood near the car hall, we heard Mrs. Carr here this evening talking about that situation, so we'll hopefully try to tackle that. Oakdale at Tenth and Eleventh Street. Oakdale at 10th and 11th Street, Highland Avenue with E6. And then, um, a resident on Facebook had asked us about West First Avenue to the lake. That will be taken care of within the first of the forest project. So we went down and did some grading, tried to help out with that situation. Hopefully, until that project comes up. The 600 and 700 block of Oakdale, Plan of Action. So the, um, town manager had mentioned a few meetings ago that we have a process now for evaluating traffic calming device requests throughout town. And so the first one we tackled was Oakdale. The town engineer looked at the data from the radar device and made the following recommendations, and that was to upgrade our stop signs there to the appropriate height necessary for enforcement. And secondly, um, we're getting a portable dynamic signboard that can be taken to any of these neighborhoods that are asking about potential speeding, and they can be placed there. It lets the driver know what the speed limit is and then tells them the speed that they're actually going. So we think that being able to wheel this over to certain areas that need it will be helpful. So a combination of some enforcement and dynamic signboard reinforcement, as they call it, we think will help with that area. The next areas that are on the list, one says the chief said, we get back to, to school. Will be Lake Street, Fifth Avenue to the curve, as Councilperson Martini asked about. Another, um, a resident originally was asking for a third speed hub, so we'll have to evaluate that on Ridge Wood.
Yeah, competing, competing speed hub people.
Just move that one down.
Yeah.
So if we just move the one maybe.
That's probably the goal. The key is to keep moving around. People won't go in this way.
There you go. And then a, a recent one that came in was Lawson Drive. So just letting you know those three are on the docks for us to, to take a look at in the process. And I'm so sorry for taking so long, but that's my report.
Well, thank you. It's very thorough. And I can see you're excited about your new product. And I am too, because it's a winner for sure. And, um, I saw Amy Washington said she would run an extension port across in the meantime to power the cameras happily, right?
I'm certainly glad you don't have to. We found power on that side of the screen.
Dorothy, anything from you? Except I'll come and sign everything. Council, anything else? Could we go to the order? Oh, Stephen. Yes, sir.
Dorothy, don't we have a, uh, workshop tomorrow on ethics?
If you sign up for it, yes, it would be wonderful. Through the forums, you can see that you need your ethics.
You have ethics. You should do that.
Yeah, I've set that up for everybody.
Yes.
And I don't know if you're getting the blast from your legal cities and them as well. So am I duplicating it?
But it's always good because, you know, you get so much, um, email from, from some of these organizations that when you send it out, I think you make sure everybody take a look at it. I want to make sure everybody has it. All right. If there's nothing else, we can go to the order. We are adjourned at.